And good evening and welcome to the, today is June the 11th, isn't it? Meeting of the Mercy First City's Coup Board. We're glad to have this audience with us tonight and those of you that are watching at home on TV. We'll jump right into everything and do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Consent items? You have received the agenda and all information prior to tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items?
Your action items are, of course, tonight, your policies. These policies really are very similar to our old policies, but because this board did not review them in a while, I thought really it would be beneficial for you all to go through and to have two readings on these. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Taylor.
So the first policy is 6.303, which replaces STU 21. It was issued in 2012, so it's just up for review this time. I don't think we had any amendments to it.
Okay, questions? Ms. Moore?
I have some questions about this one. Mostly just wondering if everything in the policy is required of the school system by state law. So many of ours, our policies are, we kind of just have to do this because of state law. Is this one that way?
This is not a requirement to have this policy under state law. I think this is just something good to have, so people know what the expectation is if this subject ever comes up in a school system.
Well, I'll just say the part that kind of sent up a red flag when I read it was the third section at line 16 about police-initiated interrogations. With police interrogating our students, which of course are sixth grade and under, at school for unrelated crimes committed outside of school hours. So this isn't even stuff that happens at school or pertains to school. But sort of laying out how the police can do that at schools, interrogate the kids. You have to make just a reasonable effort to notify the parents or guardian. And then the interrogation can proceed without the parent or guardian in attendance, but the principal could be there. Given some of the unfortunate notorious events that have happened in city schools within the past few years, this really, I was kind of surprised that we have this. So that's why I was wondering what its basis is, why we have a policy that is allowing police interrogation of our students at school for things that don't pertain to school. Unless maybe the child's the victim. That was the only thing I could think of.
Right. This would cover if the child is a victim as well. Of course, it would also cover if the child was the accused in a crime. In researching this, I actually had a question from another board member. The principal is allowed to stand in for the parent if the parent is unable or unwilling to come, because the schools stand in local parentis, which means they stand in the parent figure for the student while the parents aren't there during the school day. Typically, when I spoke to Sergeant Newberg with Murfreesboro Police Department about this policy as well, they prefer for a parent or the principal to be in there with the student, because they want somebody to be there to advocate for the child. Ninety-nine percent of the time, if it's a situation where the parent can't be reached, then they will just hold it and have the parent bring the child to the station if the child, of course, is being accused of something. The portion of the policy that says that if, that speaks about asking the principal to leave, that would be a situation where if maybe the principal was possibly implicated in whatever the issue was that they are interrogating the child about, or if it's a particularly egregious or sensitive case that they might not want to have third parties in on. But again, according to Sergeant Newberg with the police department, those types of cases are typically handled at the police department rather than at the school.
Yeah, and all that makes sense, but it's not in this policy. Like, the policy's really broad and allows for a lot more than those limited circumstances that you're laying out.
And so, the police conduct and governing in these interrogations is covered by their internal processes. They have standards and protocols that they use concerning interrogation of juveniles that they use internal to their department that would guide their behavior. Unfortunately, our policies can't dictate how law enforcement conducts their investigation. So that's probably why, you know, our policy doesn't go into all of that, because that's something on the police department's side that they cover.
Mr. Settles?
Yeah, sticking in my craw. This is difficult and I don't, I don't want to, well, I can't be blunt, can I? I don't like this. And I'm wondering if there's a reason that we are giving so much deference to the police department to question our kids without the presence of their parents. And this was a big issue just a few years ago, huge issue. And I'm surprised that this is still here. It seems like I'm picking you since you weren't here then. However, I'm wondering if any change to this has to pass muster with the police department, or will they, will they sort of do what we ask or as we ask? Because I'm concerned that although, you know, there's a lot of shoulds and could's, there's not enough must in here for me, for my kids. In that, I work in Nashville and Hermitage, and if my child was a child of the school system and the police came up to interrogate them, you may have a hard time getting in touch with me. And what your reasonable time or your reasonable efforts may be different from the next officer's reasonable efforts to make contact with me and give me the opportunity to get there in time. So I'm thinking about my grandchildren, one of whom is going into kindergarten, and I think I've got one going into the third grade, and how frightened they would be with nobody there, even though the principal may be there, understand that, but without a parental parent or a guardian, and how comfortable they would be even if I were arrested, I don't have to answer any questions. And that, that really stuck out to me, that if, that the front part was that if they refused to answer any question, that their discipline can follow. And if, if that's not the case, if I'm arrested, or if I'm questioned at the police department and I don't answer a question, they don't get to discipline me there. So this is a little, has a little more teeth in it than, than even what Murfreesboro City Police could do to me. If I went in and asked me a question, I told them I don't want to answer it, you know, that's kind of funny or odd. And I know it has to do with school policy, that type of thing, or whatever it says. But I'm wondering if this is not required by the state, why this is so heavy-handed? And maybe somebody else can help me with it in understanding some of it. I understand the part of if the child may be a victim, I understand that, and there's safeguards in place and those types of things. But especially where the child could be the perpetrator or alleged perpetrator, I'm wondering about their rights as a little citizen of Murfreesboro and how that would be interpreted. That's, it's concerning to me.
Okay. Mr. LaRoche?
So I, I was the other board member that reached out to Elizabeth this afternoon and asked her these same questions, and, you know, she's just shared with you guys the response she gave me. And I, I admit that it did not occur to me that the parents could be the alleged perpetrators here, which, you know, unfortunately, we live in a world where that's the situation. And thinking about this as a lawyer, you know, we can't waive these children's rights against self-incrimination. No matter what our policy says, if, if the police do an illegal detained interrogation without giving Miranda rights to the child, and they're going to use that evidence in a court of law, I don't think our policy is going to get in the way, one way or the other, of how that child's legal counsel's going to be able to attack that evidence for violation, violating their rights. Now that said, I, and I agree, it's completely heavy-handed, and the notion of my child being interrogated when I'm driving down, like, saying stop, it's quite bothersome to me.
Ms. Barton?
The only thing I'd like to say, having had experience with the situation, okay, is that if it's handled in the way that our system has dictated, I guess is a good word for the guidelines. For example, when we call parents, I mean, I've been in that situation several times. And I've called a parent and they didn't want to do it, and so they had to wait. They had to wait and do it when the parent was there. I've actually intervened on behalf of a child and said, you know what, I know this child too well, and it will, it will freak this child out for that to happen to them. And I've said, I don't feel comfortable even asking, because it was, it was one of those situations where the child was not the perpetrator, and, and the parent was not either. So it was just like a third party kind of thing. And so they ended up doing it somewhere else. So I think that, I know, understand what you're saying about being so broad, but we've handled it several times in a way that I thought was very professional, where the children felt okay. The policemen are fabulous with the kids. It's not like the jailer coming in, you know? It's, it's this policeman that's just saying, hey, heard this is going on, or, you know, and I'm right there if the parent can't be there. But generally, that didn't happen. Generally, either the parent was there, or they asked if they could do it another time. Unless the parent was the perpetrator.
The one part that bothers me a little bit is line 21 through 23. "The interrogation may proceed without the parent, the guardian, but the principal hisest needs shall be present unless instructed to leave interrogation by local law enforcement agencies." For that young child, that principal is the only person that's going to be in that room with that child, that that child's going to be able to identify with. And we've just had the situation not long ago, remember, where the, the child was at home and mother was having the problem? And had it not been for the SRO in the building, what would have gone on after that? I think the principal, I don't think, unless this is state law, or some other law, I don't think that we need to say that local law enforcement can ask that principal to leave during that interrogation.
Well, again, in my conversations with Sergeant Newberg, that would be an instance where the principal was implicated, like, if a child alleged that the principal had done something to the student, or maybe an assistant principal or close faculty member, where it would be a conflict for the principal to be in on that meeting with the police officer. That's the type of situations where that would come into play.
I understand that, but this policy does not say that in black and white. This policy says, "shall be present during the interrogation unless instructed to leave the interrogation." It has, it says nothing about the principal being accused or anything like that. And if that, if that's the intent, then I think we need to have that in the policy. Amanda?
And I also would say that if it's a case where the principal's the accused, that that interrogation should probably not be happening at school, period, in the first place.
Well, I mean, I agree with that, but, I mean, that's...
I mean, if that's the only reason we have...
The police department and the law enforcement's authority to interrogate or question people doesn't come from the city schools. It comes from state law, from case law. The Supreme Court has actually got to recently, long, long ago, ruled that parents don't have to be present when police question students or minors. But as to Mr. LaRoche's point, those factors come into play, the age of the student, the maturity of the student, whether or not a parent was there, whether or not they were properly Mirandaized, whether they were in custody, all of those criminal things that we hear on TV or in real life for some of us, those are all factors that come into play as to whether or not the child's statement can be used against them. A child, whether a kindergartner, infant, all the way up to adulthood, we all have the same rights, the same constitutional rights. So those aren't waived just because a student is in the school environment. But again, the source of the police officer's authority to do this comes from common law and statutory law. But, I mean, it's definitely a conversation that we could have with the Murfreesboro Police Department to see how we could better clarify, based on their internal procedures and our internal procedures, how to clarify in the policy how it actually plays out in our school system. Because the policy may seem harsh, but again, as to Ms. Barton's point, that's not how it really is on a day-to-day basis.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, a couple of things, and this is really, just because this predates most of our time on the board, the situation that happened at Hobgood a few years ago, I mean, that's sort of what we're all dancing around and not naming by name. What, what, did any changes come about in the school system as a result of that? I know there were community meetings and meetings with the school, and meetings with the police department. I'm just wondering if this policy, I mean, it doesn't look like it's changed since then because it was dated 2012, or if there's anything that we did to try to prevent something like that? Because, you know, most of the time, maybe the police are, everyone's kind and acting in a great interest, but we had a pretty notorious nationwide shame, because it did not always happen that way. And if there's anything we can do in our policies to prevent a recurrence of that, then I want to make sure we do that.
And I, when, when that happened, we were pretty clear that there was nothing that we could do, that it was a matter of the safety of the school being maybe the safest place. Since that time, there certainly have been conversations about that. I am not, I'm not one that wants to see our children arrested at school, period. And so I think there have been changes with, with the police department on that. And I guess my question, Elizabeth, would be, I hear what you're saying, so what I'm hearing is really there's, there still is nothing. If push comes to shove, there would be nothing we could do as far as preventing any of that. Is there any, is there anything we can write that would help facilitate what we feel strongly about, or does that just need to come through continual conversation?
I think it would need to come through continual conversation, perhaps an amendment to our MOU with the police department, although that kind of governs the resource officers, not necessarily patrol officer or detective investigating a case. But again, based on my conversations with the police department, I mean, this is a rare occurrence. Ninety-nine percent of the time, if it's a situation where the parent or the principal would not be there, then it's going to happen at the station and not at the school.
So are we saying then, or are you saying, Elizabeth, that no matter what this says, the police department has the trump card over whatever we want to say in this policy? Do they, can they do what they feel they need to do, no matter what we write?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we can't dictate the way the police department, the sheriff's department, the highway patrol conducts their investigations. I mean, they have their own source of authority. Of course, the relationship that we have with the Murfreesboro Police Department is a great one, and I don't think it would be a hard ask to talk to them about how we can amend our policy to, again, reflect that the careful way that they handle these cases and the careful way that our schools handle the cases, and maybe come to some softer language that'll be more palatable to the board.
And I think that, that has been, those conversations have proven out in actions, because we have not had difficulty with that.
Mr. Settles?
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's really, really good. I guess what comes up to me, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for pointing it out, shedding a broader light on it, has to do with the principal being asked to leave by local law enforcement. And you did bring up that this would be in an instance where maybe the principal was implicated or had something to do with it. Would it be too unreasonable for that to be led by the student? In other words, if the principal is the one that's accused and the student is feeling uncomfortable, could the student not say, I want to say, but I don't want to say it in front of Ms. Barton? And then they could be asked to leave. In other words, I guess my overarching, well, part of it, feeling about this is letting our kids feel safe when they're at school, and not feel like when I come to school, I'm going to have, and, you know, I can't get into their psyche, but, and I know that our police officers do everything they can to make it comfortable and all those types of things, I do understand that. But if I were my grandson, and I went to school and I had to answer some questions about something that my principal may have been implicated in, I would, you know, you can read the child and understand that there may be a problem, so that if the child says, I want to answer it, but I don't want to say it in front of Ms. Goff, then I could see that, and that takes the onus off of the police officer, because this makes it really, literally look like the police officer could, at any point, simply tell the principal, I need you to leave. Not that that would happen, and I understand that we have really good relationships, but policies are not written for times when we have really good relationships, they're written for times when things go awry. And I think that's really how we have to look at it, and I very seldom get kind of worked up about anything that we have in policy, but this is one of them, because of our history. So we have to plan, that's the only reason I have a contract with anybody I buy something with, because I'm feeling good today, but in three weeks, I may not, but the contract binds me. So if, if there's any way that that can be more student-led, or look even like it's student-led, because it gives them more power. And the other part has to do with, and this is where we get in, maybe into the weeds, or it gets a little hairy, in that if the police come to my home, I can invite them to leave and let them know I'll come down to the station. I don't want to be questioned in my home. I have that right. And I don't know if our students have that right at school to say, even on their own behalf, because they can't self-advocate. But the principal could say, because I think part of what, part of my frustration with the, the last incident that we had, or the only incident that I can remember in recent history, was that we almost felt at the mercy of the police department, well, they can come in and do whatever they want to do. If they want to set up perimeters and just question everybody, we can't do anything. That feels very, very...
Threatening.
Threatening. It, it feels like we give up and we just say, well, the police are here, so they want to question 12 kids, so just let them in there, they can question them. So then we made our school this type of free-for-all for the, for the police department, because my understanding, and since we're in a board meeting, and we have these like this, so we can talk very freely. My understanding, even in that situation, was that the police officer that was involved kind of ran around, not ran around, don't use that term, kind of had a very cavalier attitude about her position in the school, and that she could go in and, she, she did go into personnel records of the students and pretty much had free rein. And I'm not saying that that was necessarily the case, but even if, if the impression is there, that leaves a very uneasy feeling for, for parents, in that the police now have this free range with our students, with their information, with questioning them, and they can pretty much do whatever they want to do. And all it takes is that one, to make a bad decision, as we saw, and then we're dealing with a whole heap of stuff where we don't want to be on the Today Show again for this. So that, that's kind of my soapbox. I'll climb down off of it now, I'm sorry.
Well, one, I will respond to one comment you said. Would the student say, I will say so-and-so, but I don't want the principal here? How many second, third, fourth, fifth graders, sixth graders, do you think are going to say that with the principal sitting in the office? And there with, not many, not many.
May not be many, may not be many. I can only say for my grandson, I know he would, because, well, he's just my grandson, so that, you know, that accounts for it. But just that the option is there, not that that would be their wording, or that they would have to say it like that, but, like I said, if they are, as we say, experienced in dealing with juveniles, they would understand some of the body language that's going to go on, they're going to understand some of the ways that they're answering, answering the questions, and the, the officer could lead the conversation, say, are you okay with Ms. Barton being here? Or whatever, however they can, they go across. I'm just, you know, I throw that out as an example.
Can I say something?
Ms. Goff?
Well, this policy, to me, looks as though it's geared for middle school or high school level students, but the descriptor of it really does identify the policy as interrogation and searches. And I, I think that we can maybe adjust, amend some of the wording in our, in this policy, but we're not going to be able to tell law enforcement what they can and cannot do. When I worked for Children's Services and went into schools and to interrogate children or interview children about child abuse, I had full reign to go in and talk to that child by myself. So I don't think that we're, we can ask that if the principal is to be removed, could we have the guidance counselor be present, someone be present? But they have the ultimate decision in this, and we, we want to think that all of our children are precious children that never are involved in things, but we know that we have children that come to school that come from homes that are exposed to criminal activity, and they have information that helps law enforcement solve crimes. So I think it's very important that we keep this. If you want to word it differently, we can, but it's going to be, you know, there, law enforcement can still do whatever they want to do. I mean, they, they have the ultimate trump card, in my opinion.
I think, too, that's why we need the, a policy of some sort about this, is because, basically, what we're talking about is how are we going to deal with it when it happens? I think, you know what I mean? We cannot control with the police, DCS, whoever, Children's Services, we can't, I can't make them not. I can ask, and most of the time when I ask, they don't. But, you know, it's still, they're just, they're just...
Yep. So I just... Mr. Ballard, then Mr. LaRoche?
Okay. I would just say, I did, maybe I missed it, but maybe we can make this more palatable if it strongly emphasized that the chief of police must notify Dr. Gilbert or the superintendent before any of this is set in motion. And then, at that point, then Dr. Gilbert has the opportunity to, you know, make things... I, I can't imagine the interference of the police showing up en masse. They never show up in one or two or three. They show up en masse at, at an elementary school for 12-year-olds to be excited about, and also to get some leveling of whether, give it a sanity check from the police department, whether we're really talking about something that's, that needs to interrupt the school day to that level. And the second thing I would have, is that I completely understand Mr. LaRoche's comments, and I would just question, Ms. Taylor, if you put this in front of a legal board, is this thing going to pass the muster? It just seems to me that it's got a lot of...
What do you mean, a legal board?
Well, I mean, a legal review. And maybe you've given it a legal review, but I'm talking about somebody, an F. Lee Bailey look at it. Of course, he's dead, he can't do that now, but, but somebody, or a David LaRoche look at it, somebody that says, hey, you know, here's where we're going to really set ourselves up for some embarrassing situations legally.
Mr. LaRoche?
That's, thank you.
I'm sorry, Beth, excuse me.
I, I like Ms. Goff's point. We need some kind of policy. My, the idea that a, a police officer could walk into a school and flash a badge and say, I want to talk to that kid, and the teacher just has to go, okay, and can't say, you know, I would like my principal to review the policy, you know, I would like an opportunity to contact central office. That really bothers me. You know, not that Murfreesboro Police would do it, but there's been cases before where police officers have abused their power to stalk people.
Yes.
You know, we don't necessarily know if they're interrogating that child, because they're worried of that child being a victim, or whether they, you know, want that child to narc on their neighbors about something, and that child doesn't know what's going on. If we don't have some kind of policy that buys our system time to review it, and, and if the police do what they're going to do, I mean, I, for one, think they need to get a warrant of some kind. I mean, I just don't think you get to flash a badge and pull a kid out of class. We wouldn't let anybody else come in and say, I need to talk to that child. I, I don't, I just, to me, the notion that a badge would allow you to, to pull a child out of school and do whatever you want without any policy, really... a child out of school and do whatever you want without any policy really bothers me. So we, we have to have a policy. I, I guess what we, as a board, need to do is, rather than voting on this policy right now and maybe getting rid of a policy that's not perfect but needs work, maybe we should delay it as a board and, and add some language to address some of our concerns. That's my suggestion.
Are you making that in form of a motion?
Hey, I'll be happy to make that a form of motion, that we don't make any ruling yes or no on this particular policy, but we're, we'd rather shelve it until perhaps we can get some language in there after legal counsel has, has maybe been able to speak more, done some more research and maybe even worked with the police department, make sure we don't do anything that, that is really going to interfere with their investigations, because we don't want to get in the way of investigations. But I, I, obviously, I had concerns when I saw it. It sounds like we all have had concerns, and, and that's what we, as a board, need to do.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
And I would second it with the amendment that I think we should get together with the police department and, and work out what they will, how they will give in, you know what I mean? Whether they can do what we can do to make it a better situation, because I just, I guess, I know, I know there's possibility that that can happen, it's just never happened to me, sorry. So for me, when I see it, I, there was never a mass, there was one plainclothes detective that would come in, could have been anybody's dad. I mean, it was never a big production. All the kids didn't know that the police were there, you know? So I, I guess I have to, I have to say that on behalf of the Murfreesboro Police, because they are so good to our schools in so many ways, way beyond an SRO, way before we had SROs, and Dr. Gilbert knows what I'm talking about. I just can't, I don't, I don't want to feel like I'm throwing them under the bus by acting like that we've, that happens all the time here, it doesn't.
I don't, I don't think any of us, and I agree with you 100%, but now I don't think any of us are, are in that category of that boat, but I think we all would like to have some clarification. I never did agree with the Department of Children's Services came in and wanted to talk to a student, and they wouldn't tell me why before they came or after they left, because whatever that DCS was talking about affects that child, which affects him at home and affects him at school as well. But that was their law and their prerogative.
You're also securing evidence at school that you would not be able to get if you went and entered, viewed that child at home, so...
But it's not our place, as a school board, to hold a, you know, an interrogation-free zone for our kids. I mean, I just, the note...
You have to, I think you, we'd have to change the law, because law enforcement has, I mean, people that are there to protect children have these rights, I think, so...
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second to defer Policy 6.303. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Next policy.
The next policy is 6.3091, Weapons and Dangerous Instruments. It rescinds former policy STU 36. With that, happy to answer any questions.
It's so much better word than it used to be.
Any questions? I have a motion to, I'm sorry?
I've got a good pun. We fired all our guns on the first, first one. We don't have any questions.
Wah wah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Policy 6.3091, Weapons and Dangerous Instruments?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next policy is 6.317, Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority. This rescinds former policy STU 24. This governs the process that students or parents can use if they want to appeal a disciplinary decision through the chain of command within Murfreesboro City Schools. I'm happy to answer any questions about this policy.
Mr. Ballard?
Clarification may be for me. Number nine, or line number nine, and it speaks of the licensed employees of the board. I didn't follow up on the, the other policy, but what would be in a licensed employees of the board?
These would be your teachers, for example.
But technically, we only, is that cascaded it, their employees of ours or their employees of the school system? And I get...
It's, it's the way, it, it really is just the way it's worded. I mean, it's going to be, that would be, pardon?
In the law, it says "board," but I think that might just be a misnomer, incorrect interchange between board and LEA. But it's a licensed employee of the district, I think, is the intent.
Okay.
Teacher as opposed to a janitorial staff or something like that.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, I understand the licensed employees, I was just getting clarification of, of the board.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 6.317, Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next policy is 6.318, Admission of Suspended or Expelled Students, and this rescinds STU 8.
I, I have a question, and, and it's really not just this policy. What is our alternative school? I mean, what if we can't allow a student in our school, are they, do they have to go to county schools? Is it...
They would go to county school, a private school, homeschool, um, maybe a charter school, that, I don't think there's any in the local area.
So we can deny them education in our system, but then the parents still have to provide an education in some way, whether it's homeschooling or private school. We don't have an alternative system that we can send them to that is still taxpayer-funded?
Not within Murfreesboro City Schools, no.
Rutherford County does, though, don't they?
Yes.
And technically, I don't know whether we would have to, if they're expelled for a calendar year, then you, the parents would not have to, they're, they're expelled for a calendar year unless they can...
Well, I still think compulsory attendance would still apply. Mm-hmm. They would still have to enroll somewhere, but they couldn't attend a public school unless the, I mean, this is a, this is permissible. If somebody were to be expelled from Rutherford County Schools and they wanted to try to get their, uh, student into Murfreesboro City Schools, they could apply and make their case to, to our system to see if we would allow them in. And of course, that's a case-by-case analysis on, you know, the gravity of the offense and, you know, the possibility of disruption to the school if the student would be admitted. But, um, so it's not absolutely, they can't attend public school, but the public schools just aren't required to admit somebody who's been expelled or suspended from another district.
I think we've had this happen one time in the last 10 years.
We have a motion to approve Policy 6.318, Admission of Suspended or Expelled Students.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Goff, okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next policy is 6.404, Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. It rescinds policy STU 32. This is a policy that's required for districts to have by state law and state board rules and policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve.
Mr. Ballard meets, moves to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The final policy is 6.501, Special Education Behavioral Support. This rescinds policy STU 59, Special Education Behavioral Support. I'd be happy to answer any questions. This governs isolation and restraints of special education students. And again, this is, one is required by law.
I have a question.
Ms. Moore?
Um, it's more just about the application of the required reporting at the end, in line 157.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where the school, I believe the school submit a report to, and I guess where it says LEA, that means to the central office?
Yes, that's correct.
So the board does not see that kind of report? Because I was going to say, I haven't seen anything like that. That's the report that just stays at central office?
I mean, it's sent to central office, um, I'm sure if you wanted to see it, you could...
You could ask, but it's not, okay, doesn't automatically come to the board?
No. And that actually is a change from the TSBA policy. And the law, it says it has to go to the LEA, not the board.
But the, and the TSBA policy says...
It said board, but the law says LEA. So our policy is in line with the law.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve Policy 6.501, Special Education Behavioral Support.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Normally, I know that this is, this is just for policies, but we do have a report that we do have to submit to the state that has to be there on June, the last day of June. And, um, sometimes the, the receiving mechanism at the state and the sending mechanism that the state has can cause delays in sending information to the state. So to make sure that we can get it there on time, I'm asking that you all take a look at this, because this is, is tonight, because this is something that we do have to have in before the end of June.
As Dr. Gilbert stated, we must submit a differentiated pay plan to the State Department by June 30th. In the past several years, we've either done ESL or special education teachers or both. This year, we would like to recommend that we would give a $2,000 signing bonus to qualified sixth-grade teachers and to ESL teachers. We probably need about five or six sixth-grade teachers and about three ESL teachers. And I would like to...
Got questions, I see. Okay, Mr. Suddles, Mr. LaRoche, and Ms. Moore.
Uh, my question is, we propose six, new sixth-grade teachers hired to the school system and teachers who transfer to the position of sixth-grade teachers receive the signing bonus. Is this transferring from another system or transferring to the sixth grade? I was a fourth-grade teacher last year, now I'm a sixth-grade teacher.
If you come from another system, there'll be new hired, uh, sixth-grade teachers, so they would get it.
Right.
And if you transfer from a fourth grade to a sixth grade, you would get it as well.
Mr. LaRoche?
Was this accounted for in the budget that we approved? I, we went through a lot of numbers back then, I assumed that you knew that this policy was...
Yes, sir, we plan this every year. Yes, sir.
Ms. Moore?
Um, I was wondering, you said that last year you offered this to, for ESL teachers. What was the result? Is this an effective way to get the teachers we need to get?
It's something that we, we have to, the legislators made this a have-to, so every school system, every school system has to choose some method of...
It's required by the state.
So we have to have...
It's the cheapest way that we can do this.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, I thought it was in, okay.
So how, how did you decide to do ESL in sixth grade?
It's getting harder and harder to get upper-grade teachers, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Everybody wants to teach the little ones, and the state recently changed their endorsement, you either pre-K3 or K5. And so if you're middle, if you want to teach middle school, it's 6'8". But fifth grade can go one above and teach sixth grade, but no one student teaches at sixth grade in K5. So they're not comfortable with sixth grade.
Now, wait a minute, you said endorsements of those who have a K5 endorsement, because I know they cannot teach sixth grade.
Yes, sir, they can.
They can, they can go one grade above.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They just don't want to, because they haven't had any experience with that thing.
And this is, this is fairly new, so I called the state to make sure that they would approve it, and they thought it was a great idea.
We also have to think about trying to attract teachers that have a 6'8" qualification from going to middle schools and coming to us instead. So, um, I'm telling you, that's a, it's a great idea to put it for sixth-grade teachers.
Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Ballard?
So are we doing anything for the other new hires? Do they qualify for a bonus?
No, sir, we're just giving them a job.
Oh, so if you're looking to come into the school system, MCS, and you're, you're qualified, you would elect to choose the sixth grade so you can get your bonus?
Because it's 6'8".
But you, you wouldn't pick kindergarten, because you won't get a bonus?
No, we, we have...
Believe me, there are a lot of people that, that bonus won't be enough.
The state has raised the base paper teachers, though, right? So that's good.
Yep, they did a lot of...
How much money does it take to steal teachers from Williamson County?
More than $2,000.
Lot more than that.
And when is this payable to them?
September, September 2019.
Okay.
One month after they start work.
So they see this as a $2,000 check, not spread out through the year?
Correct. It will be included in our September 15th paycheck.
All right, I'm the devil's advocate now.
Yes, sir.
Okay? You hired me in September, and I stayed until December. Do I have to give you anything back?
Not at this time, we don't have anything.
Okay, all right.
You can't sign a waiver that you, or a...
It's a bad reference.
Not a waiver, but...
Well, you sign a...
They have to work, teach for so long.
We could, some, we could formulate something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Knock on wood, we have not had that happen before.
That's good, okay. All right, any other discussion? Have a motion to approve the differentiated pay plan for Murfreesboro City Schools for 2019 and '20.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any reports or information?
Not on this meeting.
Other business?
Nope.
Well, somebody, I'm going to refer to Mr. Shacklet, being he's our city council rep. What is the process from now on, on our budget?
Tomorrow, we'll have a workshop, council will have a workshop, it'll be conducted here and not at the police building. Uh, we'll have our first reading of the budget tomorrow, and then Thursday, at our regular meeting, there'll be the second reading of the budget, so...
So tomorrow, what time is the meeting tomorrow?
11:30 tomorrow.
Here, in this chamber?
In this chamber. Uh, and then Thursday will be our regular council meeting, 7 o'clock.
All right.
And you're pulling for us, right, Bill?
Always.
No doubt. All right, anything else coming for the board?
Move, adjourn.
Mr. LaRoche says, "Let's go home." Do I have a second? Mr. Suddles says, "It's okay." So all in favor, good night.
Good night.